I pleasantly address to the White House of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, the nation on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
Uh, no changes to the agenda. I just note that Maggie McKeown is joining us electronically, I believe.
Yeah, she's on.
Yes, she's on.
Okay, then if there's no changes to the agenda, we need a motion to brief the agenda.
Motion by Barr, second by Sulu, all in favor?
I agree.
I oppose abstaining. I give the thumbs up. Motion carries. And our budget presentation? So let me just do a quick introduction, Rob. So for members of the community, we will be doing our Board of Education budget hearing for the 2021 school year. We have recorded the message and then at the conclusion of the budget hearing presentation, we will entertain any questions. If you have a question, please enter it into the chat box and we will get through those questions as warranted. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Miller, who will start the presentation.
Good evening and welcome to the Salamanca City Central School District 2021 Budget Hearing.
Start your line. One moment.
Other elements of our lives by the COVID-19.
Thank you.
Hello and welcome to the Salamanca City Central School District Annual Budget Presentation for the 2020-2021 School Year. The annual Warrior Vision student video production of the 2020-2021 school budget has obviously been impacted, like so many other elements of our lives, by the COVID-19 virus. Fortunately, the Salamanca City Central School District began to develop our fiscal plan and school budget as far back as October of 2019. Because of this, our forward thinking and planning has permitted the district to be prepared to deal with the current pandemic and our eventual return to more typical school operations, instruction, sports, extracurricular activities, and meet our required staffing needs in a post-COVID educational environment without impacting our school budget. Our school budget presentation will include three separate components. First, an overview of our instructional and program needs, accomplishments and priorities will be facilitated by Dr. Beeler, our Assistant Superintendent for Academic Services. Then, we'll have an overview of the propositions contained in the election materials and walk the community through absentee ballot processes to participate in the school budget election and votes. This will be facilitated by Mr. Bridenstine, the Superintendent. And finally, there will be an overview of the 2020-2021 spending plan, including the New York State Required Elements of the Budget, including program, administrative, and capital cost. This will be facilitated by Mrs. McGara, Assistant Superintendent for Finance. At this time, I would like to introduce Dr. Beeler, Assistant Superintendent for Academic Services.
Thank you, Mr. Bridenstine. I'd like to take a couple moments to simply review where we are right now relative to curriculum and instruction, and I'm going to add safety into our planning so that we have an idea of the programs that we are offering, as well as the successes that we have seen over the past several years. Mr. Seber will be announcing shortly our high school graduation rate, but I am pleased to let you know that we are announcing the highest graduation rate in the past 10 years, and we've only gone back 10 years to look. So we are very pleased with this, but Mr. Seber will be announcing that number very shortly. Additionally, the advanced Regents diploma rate is the highest that it has been in the past 10 years. Our enrollment is also up, which we believe reflects confidence in the schools and our increased program offerings that we have. Additionally, we currently offer 17 college and seven Advanced Placement courses. We are focused on STEAM as a district and as a career pathway, and we have that in our grades pre-K through 12. We have a robust extended day enrichment program where we offer additional learning opportunities and tutoring to our students in grades K through 12. We also have a very robust community education program for our adult learners in the Salamanca community. Our commitment's moving to next year as well as beyond. We are going to continue our focus on career and college preparedness. We're going to improve our interventions for students who are below grade level or are struggling. We plan to update our assessment plan and implement more efficient and effective assessments. We also plan to implement more effective social and emotional learning systems, which will assist us in improving our school climate. We will continue our tutoring and enrichment for all students, and additionally, we have a comprehensive overhaul and improvement to the security and safety across the district. One thing that's important to note is that these are new improvements to the programs that we already have in place. We do not intend to cut any of our programs moving forward into the 2021 school year. So specifically, when we talk about improvements to safety and security, we have enhanced systems throughout the entire district, including cameras and access points. Additionally, we have personnel who will be focused on the security of our buildings and the security and safety of our students and staff. We have over $146,000 specifically marked for students' books. That's literature for students to not only use as techbooks, textbooks, but also for reading. We have new programs for social emotional learning and anti-bullying. We have new and additional instruments for our music program. We have upgrades to our student and staff computer devices and software enhancements. We will be increasing our before-school childcare options, and we will be transitioning to NWEA assessments so that we can more efficiently and effectively monitor student progress.
Thank you, Dr. Beeler. As always, in the Warrior Way, much is happening in our academic domains to improve the lives of our students and our community. This year, the school district budget vote includes three considerations for our voters to ponder. The first is the election of one Board of Education member for a five-year Board of Education term from July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2025. This seat is currently held by Kerry J. John, and he is again running for election and is running unopposed. Number two, the district residents will have the opportunity to cast their vote for the 2021 School District Budget Spending Plan. The spending plan for the school year is $43,537,292. And this is McGara's portion of this presentation. She will outline these expenditures. And finally, a proposition is on the ballot for the district with community support to acquire three additional parcels of property for future development. Let me explain. The three properties looking to be purchased include one property at 70 Fern Avenue. This property is adjacent to the high school athletic fields and is contiguous to a number of other properties currently owned and recently purchased by the school district. This property at 70 Fern Avenue with voter approval will be developed at a later date with a future voter approval required by the community. The two parcels of property on Front Avenue include a portion of 413 Fern Avenue. This parcel and a portion of the parcel is approximately 154 feet wide by 200 feet deep. This property runs from the back of the property forward to Front Avenue and is adjacent to Vets Park. The second parcel of land on Front Avenue is a parcel of land approximately 90 feet by 550 feet deep. This also is adjacent to Vets Park and is contiguous to 413 Front Avenue. The vacant parcel of land is owned by the Seneca Nation, and recently, the Seneca Nation has approved a long-term 40-40-year lease through the Seneca Nation. Both of the Front Avenue properties will be used for future site development at Vets Park, including additional parking and green space to enhance the amenities at Vets Park. As you can see from the map above, this is an aerial view of 70 Fern Avenue. The three properties immediately touching this property are owned by the school district, and this property would be used for future site development for athletic or buildings and ground storage on the main campus. As a reminder, the community approved last year a substantial improvement to the athletic field and the track, as well as a scoreboard, seating, press box, and lighting at this portion of the high school. Purchasing of this property will allow the district to have future options to accommodate the growing crowds at the park and at the high school main field. Looking at an aerial view of the Front Avenue proposed properties, the area outlined in blue is the lease with the Seneca Nation for the currently vacant land, and the second parcel highlighted in a rainbow highlighter includes the back portion of the 413 Front Avenue property. Again, these will be used for future development of the park. The property acquisitions will be purchased and/or leased with voter approval. The 70 Fern Avenue properties and the Front Avenue properties respectively are listed at 79,999, $50,000, and 913,51 for a 44-year lease respectively. It's important to note that there will be no impact to the tax levy for the purchases of these properties. Moving on to the school budget vote, this year it is entirely by absentee ballot by executive order. By now, all district residents and voters should have already received your mail-in, self-addressed stamped election ballot. If you have not yet received your ballot, please call Mrs. Cook at 945-2400 extension 4025, or send an email to the address listed on the screen. Absentee ballots must, again, I repeat, must be received by the district clerk by 5:00 p.m. on June 9th to be counted in the election results. To vote in this year's election, one must be a district resident and a qualified voter. A qualified voter must be a United States citizen at least 18 years of age on or before June 9, 2020. You must also be a district resident for 30 days immediately preceding the date of the election, with your current address either correctly filed at the Cataragius County Board of Elections in Little Valley, or documented on the Seneca Nation Tribal Roll, or properly registered through the district's personal registration, which was held on May 18, 2020. Additionally, Native Americans who are properly registered and residing on the Allegheny Reservation in the Steenberg or Cold Spring area for a period of 30 days preceding the election, which is outside such boundaries of the city school district, are also eligible to vote in this school district's election for this year. Please remember, absentee ballots must be received by the district clerk, Janet Cook, by 5:00 p.m. on June 9th to be counted. Thank you for your support and your consideration, and as always, go Warriors! At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Karen McGara, Assistant Superintendent for Finance, who will provide an in-depth detail of the overall budget and spending plan for the 2020-2021 school year. Mrs. McGara, take it away.
Good evening and welcome to the Salamanca City Central School District 2021 Budget Hearing. Since we are under COVID restrictions, we are obviously holding our budget hearing via Zoom. As I have actually recorded this presentation, please feel free to enter your questions into the chat function, and I will try to get to them as the hearing presentation runs. I will also pause at the end to answer any questions from the chat box as well. So here we go. Again, welcome, and enter your questions in the chat box. So how did we get here? We started out by looking at the district goals, and from that, we related each one of those into our budget development goals. As far as health and wellness, we'll continue to contract with TeleMed and provide supports for our students' mental and physical health needs. District engagement, once we're released from all of our COVID restrictions, we hope to have our welcome-back picnics and our athletic events and music and arts events and math and literacy nights and all those other good, fun things that we usually do. Professional development, Director Penny Beatty has provided us with a fantastic professional development catalog, and the administrators have plans for some great training during our professional development days. Student achievement and learning, we'll continue to implement new and relevant instructional programming that supports all of our students and keeping our class sizes low. We'll expand upon our after-school programs for our students as well. And lastly, but not least, of course, is fiscal management. I can assure you that our spending plan is fiscally sound and prudent. With the 2% tax gap our district calculates out using the state-provided formula, that we could actually have increased our taxes to about 45%. But we are keeping our tax levy flat, and we'll only assess a $250,000 tax levy once again this year. As far as personnel changes, we have two retirements this year, one effective on June 30th, the other effective in mid-October. We will replace both elementary teachers, and our new positions are an Assistant Director for People Personnel Services, a Chief Equity Officer, a Speech Pathologist, and as usual, we need bus drivers and monitors. Taking a look at the tax levy, you can see how it increased. Up to $3.4 million is our high, down to 2.4, down to 1.1, and we're down at $250,000 again for the third year. Taking a look at our revenues. This year, state aid is about 55% of our income. Impact aid is 18% of our income. The Native American contracts for transportation and tuition is 16%. Our use of reserves for unemployment, workers' compensation, our technology commitment fund, our employees' retirement funds, and our use of unreserved totals about 9% of our budget. And we have this little gray piece in here that's other, about $550,000 or 1% of our budget, and that includes Medicaid reimbursements and BOSI's reimbursements, tuition payments for summer programming if we have it, or after-school programming for adult ed, et cetera, things like that. And then lastly, $250,551 for tax-related. It says 1%, but if it was not rounded, it would be .51% for our tax revenues. As far as state aid is concerned, our basic formula, or as otherwise known as foundation aid, is $15.4 million. New York State is making this pandemic adjustment of a minus $533,420, but the Federal Cares Act equates to that same amount, so we end up being even at this point. BOSI's aid at $2.7 million, public and private excess cost aids, about $930,000, transportation aid of $1.1 million, building aid at just under 3.7, hardware, technology, software, textbooks, and library, these combined are about $190,000, I'm sorry, $130,000. And all of this is from state aid. Now, if state aid were to be reduced, we would not have to increase our taxes, we would just increase our use of unreserved funds. As far as our tax-related revenues, again, $250,000 levy. Other payments in lieu of taxes are our pilot is about $200. Our interest and penalty on taxes, we're estimating at $351,000. Impact aid, operating 7.5, and specific impact aid for students with disabilities of $159,000. As I spoke earlier, use of reserves, our fund balance right now is 3.19. Is that we're using our ERS, our Employees Retirement System reserve, we're going to use $237,000. Unemployment, $25,000. Fund balance for Technology Commitment Fund is $363,000. And our Workers' Compensation reserve, we're going to use $28,000. Next up, this is all the miscellaneous stuff. As you can see here, the largest pieces are our Medicaid reimbursement and our prior year expenditures from BOSI's. The reason that is, is that BOSI's is a nonprofit and is not able to obtain any profits or have a fund balance. So at the end of their year, after they're closed out, any excess money is returned back to the individual districts. As you can see, we also have interest in here and indirect costs from federal programs and E-rate, interest in earning from dividends, and our rental property from BOSI's, and tuition, driver's ed, little things like that make up our miscellaneous revenues. And lastly, but again, not least, is our Native American contract for tuition and transportation, and that totals out about $7.1 million. So, taking a look at our expenditures. New York State requires us to present the budget in three parts. Administrative, those costs that support all district functions. Capital, costs that provide for the health and safety of our facilities, equipment, and finally, the most important, program. We're those costs that enable us to educate and provide each student with wonderful experiences and opportunities to allow them to learn and to grow, to reach their potential. While New York State requires a three-part budget, I think this is more important and more helpful for individuals. And so if you take a look at this, salaries at 43%, and fringes at 17%, so about 60% of our budget is nothing but people paying for their salaries and all the benefits that are associated with working for the school district. Second piece is contractual. Here, at about 5% of our budget. Thirdly, is materials and supplies are about 3%. BOSI's is 13%, and right now, our BOSI's aid is at .887. So for every dollar that we spend on BOSI's that's eligible for aid, we'll get back 88.7 cents. Capital, 17%. Operations, 1%. And textbook tuitions is also 1%. So overall, that's a different way to take a look at the budget. But going back to the New York State required, three-part budget, program, 68%. So just under $30 million is our program. Then, followed up by capital, 21%, and just over $9 million. And administrative, 11% of our budget, or $4.677 million. To take a little closer look at each one of those pieces, here we have the administrative costs at $4.6 million, or about 11%. As you can see, it's the Board of Education, the district clerk, district meetings, superintendent's office, the business office, audit, treasurer's office, tax collector costs, fiscal agent fees, legal personnel, or human resources, public information, central print and data, undistributed, or things like insurance, and things that basically take up every part of the administration, curriculum costs and supervision costs, and then benefits that apply to any of the individuals who are employed under this category. Next, we have program. This, of course, is our largest piece, 68%. This is all the instructional staff, and anybody who does basically hands-on with students. Our legal costs, safety and security, that's not only our SROs, but our safety coordinator, and personnel under safety, undistributed, same as with administration, that's costs across the district, supervision, in-service, and teaching. Students with disability, occupational education, or our BOSI's costs for those that attend to BOSI's for their programming. Special schools includes our Warrior Academy, as well as some after-school programming, our libraries, our computer-assisted, or all of our technology. Attendance folks, our guidance folks, our health offices for our nurses, our psychologists and social workers, our family support workers, extracurricular activities, all that fun stuff like drama club and SYC and SYD, all that fun after-school stuff, all of our athletics, our transportation, and our bus garage, and all the benefits associated with all the folks that work under the programming aspect of our three-part budget, for a grand total of just under $30 million. Next up, we have the capital piece, a little bit of capital advisory for the business office, operations and maintenance, that's all our facilities and grounds costs, undistributed, again, their portion. Transportation is purchase of school buses and equipment, benefits associated with any of the folks that work underneath this. Debt service is our principal and interest due on our outstanding bonds, capital aid of $45,000, and transfer to capital of $1.6 million, for a grand total of $9 million, for about 21% of our budget. Next up, transfer to capital. So as with last year, we are including a transfer to capital in the amount of $1.6 million. So the notice of intent to transfer to capital, $1.6 million of capital improvements work to be undertaken using available district funds without borrowing. Therefore, we have this cash on hand, and we'll utilize it according to this resolution. The district's 2021 proposed budget includes the transfer of available unallocated district funds to the district's capital fund in order to finance several necessary capital improvements at certain district facilities, primarily at Veterans Memorial Park, including some work that could not be accommodated under the construction budgets for other approved capital projects in the district. Pursuant to a project plan that has been prepared by the district's architects and is available for public inspection in the district offices, these capital improvements are currently anticipated to include, without limitation, the completion of certain work associated with the Veterans Memorial Park Development Project, including, but not limited to, electrical, mechanical, lighting, infrastructure, and paving work. The aggregate cost of such work will include the purchase of original furnishings, equipment, machinery, and apparatus required in connection with the purposes for which the site is to be used, and all ancillary or related work required connection therein. Upon the approval of the budget by the district's voters, the Board of Education, aka the Board, will be authorized to expend for such work, including for preliminary costs and costs incidental thereto, in amount not to exceed the maximum estimate cost of $1.6 million, provided that the detailed cost of the components of the work, as generally described in the project plan, may be reallocated among such components, or such components may be deleted, revised, or supplemented if, one, the Board shall determine that such reallocation, deletion, revision, or supplementation is in the best interest of the district, and, two, the aggregate amount to be expended for the work shall not exceed the $1.6 million total authorized amount under the district's approved budget. And next, we'll discuss the contingent budget. If the budget were to be voted down, we would go to a contingent budget. As right now, there are no guidance issued, there has been no guidance issued on what happens if your budget is voted down, we would have to automatically go to a contingent budget, which means that district buildings, including all athletic fields, would not be usable for community use unless all costs were fully covered. There'd be no free usage permitted at all. Bus purchases and all equipment purchases would be eliminated, non-union, non-certified personnel salaries would be frozen, and transfers to capital would also be removed. So please, remember to vote. Send in your ballot for the budget vote, election of your board member, and purchase of the property. The ballots must be received by June 9th at 5:00 p.m. They both have to be dated and signed in order to be valid.
So, thank you, Dr. Beeler and Mrs. McGara. Point of concern regarding the slides regarding the property, I even verbally gave the incorrect street address to clarify. I inadvertently gave the incorrect street address to clarify. It's an outright property purchase of 70 Fern Avenue, a purchase of a portion of 413 Front Avenue and a long-term lease with the vacant land on Front Avenue adjacent to 413. Both of those properties on front border, that's her. If there are any questions, please enter them into the chatroom box. We can give a few minutes. Mom, is there anything Karen that you'd like to also add?
I think you said it all.
Mark and I did it once, but yours is better.
About Dr. Beeler, do you have anything else to add?
No, I don't. Actually, I just wanted to express my gratitude for the work that Karen does. I mean, that was more than is required by prior and she always offers a higher level of transparency to everything that we do here in large part because we should be proud of the way that we and she fiscally manages our finances.
I would add one thing with regard to the budget. Dr. Beeler touched on it. And I think that for the community who knows, we have not increased our levy for our taxes since 2010, 2011. And I think that is a strong testament to the fiscal leadership that Karen has displayed, but also the leadership of the school board to be responsive to our community needs when it comes to the funds that the community provides us. Dr. Beeler also noted that this budget does not have, like other school districts are discussing, substantial program or staffing reductions. Other districts are wrestling with that. We are not reducing staff. We are not reducing programs. In fact, we're adding staff and adding programs because our enrollment continues to rise. That is a reflection that we have listened and understood the needs of our community and strategically planned to be able to weather any financial, fiscal or biological storm that may come our way. Dr. Beeler is right. Karen's level of transparency is quite high and we've had the opportunity over the last few weeks to troll a few other districts in their presentations. And we are in a very good position fiscally. We are in a great position mental health-wise. We are in even better position to weather this lengthy COVID storm. And I hope that the community will recognize that. We are here morning, noon and night. If you have questions on the budget or program, we will gladly take your calls and we'll gladly deal with any questions that you might have. But it doesn't appear that there are any entered into the chatroom.
Okay. Questions? Do you get many people calling about the tax not going up or any questions about the budget?
I had one community member approach me.
That's when I see.
We spent about 40 minutes talking and it was a great conversation. And that particular person didn't call back and just wanted to clarify something that she understood. She read our Powell version cover to cover and it answered just about every question she had, so.
Okay. Before we move on, does our Board of Education message? Brad, you want to start?
I've got nothing today.
Okay. Well, I'm excited about graduation. I understand it's the 13th at 3:00 in the afternoon at the casino.
That's what my taxes must have supplied.
I'm glad, you know, that it's that. And I've got to commend the teacher. This must have been something, you know, to be teaching like they are over the internet and trying to keep the kids interested and not walk away. And so I, I think this has been a hard year to end, or ending. And I hope that it's okay for the kids. I mean, I hope the kids are not in some. I know the smarter kids will have no problem. There's always that Q I worry about.
Thanks to Bob, Mark and Karen for the budget presentation. A lot of effort and very well done. And I worry about the kids too, but I think we have a very, very staff that will catch them off. We have lots of resources. So I think, I think it'll be okay.
You know what I mean about that. Maggie, do you have any thoughts on that?
I've been out for 10 years, so I hope I still move a little bit.
Maggie, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I can't, oh, yeah, good. Said I couldn't do it. Just thank you again to our teachers and our staff and to Karen and Mark and Bob for the budget presentation. Everyone's done really great work over the past couple of months especially, but that's not surprising, you know, given the staff that we have in district. So just thank you again.
Karen?
I'm good tonight.
Are you dead right now?
Yeah, I'm good as well.
Okay.
Thanks.
I also want to thank Karen, Mark and Bob for the budget presentation. It was very nice. It was very well done. It's nice to have a chance to still explain where all our money is going, even if it is during Zoom. I also want to thank all the teachers, like you said, Sue, especially the women, whether it's harder and harder to curtail kids and so they're doing a really great job trying to make sure they're keeping them engaged. It is really tough for the teachers out there, but, you know, I know my daughter still has her Zoom with Miss Hansen every day at 9:30. So it's, you know, she's still staying connected with all of the kids and I appreciate it. And it's tough. It's nice to see that our district is not cutting things where a lot of districts have to. And again, that does speak to the financial stability that we're lucky enough to be in and the way that Karen, Bob, Mark and the board manages the budget. So it's very exciting and I'm glad that we're in a good place and we're not where we were several years ago where we had to face layoffs. And I know other districts are there. And lastly, I'd just like to say congratulations to Maggie. She had a little baby girl. Angelina. Helping her hand, too. So, congratulations. Okay, and now we will move to Bob.
Just a few very, very brief comments. I want to thank all of the staff as the year winds down, the teachers, the teacher assistants, the counselors, psychologists, social workers, our therapists, speech, OT, PT and all of our administrators. Things are rapidly winding down and this is always a stressful time of year. And I just want to commend our staff for being champs on an instructional level, but also for our buildings and grounds and our food service and our transportation personnel. They are just absolutely rocking it each and every day. And I thank my lucky stars that we have such a dedicated staff. I also want to thank Seneca Nation, the Seneca Gaming Corporation, President Armstrong's office and countless others, as well as Mr. Seabrook, Mr. Haley, Dr. Beeler and our audiovisual staff for working on what will be a great ending for the class of 2020 at graduation on June 13th. Mr. Seabrook will take points on that. So I will stop before I let any of the critical details spill out before Mr. Seabrook's ready. And just, I want to thank everyone for allowing this to happen. And while it wasn't the program and the year the seniors have had, we are glad that we had them for this year. So with that, I'll end and say thank you, everyone.
So we need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Sue, second by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thumbs up, abstain, motion carried. And our personnel action. So we have the patch. So we need a motion to approve the personnel consent agenda.
Okay.
Motion by Dale.
Second.
Second by Brad. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain. Maggie gives a thumbs up, motion carried. Do we have an introduction of anyone? For the order, Mr. Seabrook to start the whole.
Am I unmuted now? So I'm very excited to be able to tell you about two of the high school staff that are going to be up for tenure appointment tonight. As many of you know, typically what I look for in staff members are those that build positive relationships with students. Two staff members, Mr. Mark Chase and Mr. Eric Kemenster, are two staff that always have kids with them. I would consider them kid magnets. Mr. Kemenster is our choral director and drama club advisor and he has developed and promoted both programs and elevated both the expectation and the performance of both programs. During the drama season, he spends countless hours here at school working after school with kids. He has been a true pleasure to have on staff and his dedication to this district and students are unquestionable. Mr. Chase is our librarian and I consider him one of the easiestgoing people I know. He is always there, willing to pitch in, give a helping hand or take the reins of any project. The kids flock to the library before and after school. He has built extremely positive relationships with his basketball team and you can find Mr. Chase consistently at school events supporting the students. Usually, there is a group of students following him around. During the day, Mr. Chase works hand-in-hand with staff members to utilize the library resources and he is a true asset to the high school and I truly appreciate all that he does for us. So I'm very excited to look forward to their tenure appointments tonight. Thank you.
Karen, do you have transportation or buildings reference?
Yeah, Rich couldn't be here this evening due to... Okay. Rich couldn't be here this evening due to a family emergency. So he asked me to speak on behalf of J.C., who's being appointed permanently tonight. He's a great employee, always shows up on time and does as he's asked and has been a pleasure to have onboard since he started with us.
Okay, we also have one more introduction and I just want to make sure that Mrs. Beaver, Seneca principal, if she's on the call or not.
I was here.
Okay, I was here, okay. I will do the introduction of Mrs. Carolyn Fisher, mathematics. During the course of her tenure period, she came in at a time of a fair amount of transition within the mathematics program, particularly at Seneca. And the academic results that Carolyn has had with her students is really quite impressive. She is a comprehensive contributing member of the mathematics department. She is an integral member of the Seneca faculty. She regularly, like Mr. Chase and Mr. Kemenster, has students with her before school, after school, all throughout the day. They do, there is a characteristic of our tenure recipients tonight where students flock to them. To say that Carolyn and her Seneca teammates get our intermediate aid students would be a tremendous understatement. She has been a blessing and a stable force within our mathematics program, the department, and it shows with the student achievement and the results that she is getting, not just as an educator, but as someone who cares deeply for kids. Carolyn, it's my honor and privilege to recognize you this evening for the conclusion of your tenure period. And we are so glad you are with us on faculty and staff and we look forward to many, many years of you serving our students and participating as a member of our growing mathematics program and our steam program. Congratulations.
And our new business is our senior school district resource officer program agreement. We need a motion to approve that. Motion by Barb. Second by Dale. Are there any questions?
Just got a comment. I spoke with the sheriff's department today and with the approval of this contract, adding as a compliment to Officer Dombek at Prospect and Officer Devois at the high school, we will be receiving and securing a new school resource officer at Seneca Intermediate School and that would be Salomeka alumni Officer Ron Smith, starting June 42nd.
So we have a motion by Barb, second by Dale, all in favor?
Aye.
Thumbs up by Maggie. Opposed, abstain, motion carried. And we are creating a new library position. So we need a motion to approve the creation of a school library. Sue, motion by Sue.
Second.
Second by Brad. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Maggie gives thumbs up, opposed, abstain, motion carried. And the I.D. is to accept. Need a motion to accept what's proposed. The question you put in that. Motion by Dale. Second by Sue. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thumbs up by Maggie. Opposed, abstain, motion carried. Then we have our information and reports for everyone to review. And then we need a motion to adjourn executive session regarding...
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mark.
Good job.
You have 250 points to get up to my level.
You can go, Carrie, that's right.
I'm sorry, Carrie.
Well, I plan on 10 more years.
Okay. You'll get it. You'll get it.
On behalf of the New York State School Boards Association and School Board University, Learning for Leaders, there is a school board excellence award presented to Carrie John, Salomeka City Central School District for participation in New York State School Boards Association Leadership Development Opportunities, totaling 150 points. Congratulations, Mr. John, and we appreciate your service and your leadership and your contributions to the Salomeka community and especially all Salomeka warders, big and small. Thank you.
Next, we need a motion to go to executive session for the purpose of action. Looking at Barry. Second by Dale. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carried.
We will not be returning for business.
We won't be returning. The only one who really need...
Right.
Can you keep that down?
Yep.